Did you get a tree?
A tree? I thought they only gave away those last four at the end, but they gave away a couple in the middle. And I thought, oh, I wonder what this is. Trees are typically good. Yeah, heck yeah. We had one, one, two or three years back that.
We gotta make sure you record it.
Wow.
No, I did that on purpose.
Okay.
I think we're ready, Jake.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Linden City Council meeting. I am Mayor Pro Tem Jake Hoyt. I'll be conducting today. We'll have a invocation by Councilmember Randy Powell, after which Councilmember Van Cherry will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My dear heavenly Father, with grateful hearts we bow our heads before thee to give thanks unto thee to live in this wonderful city. We're grateful to be your presence and citizens in this fine place to live. And we ask for thy blessing upon us as we go about the business for this city, that we will be able to have good minds, that will think clearly, and that we will be able to counsel together, and be able to come to good conclusions that will benefit our citizens here. We're grateful to live in this great land, this great nation, and also so grateful for all those who served to protect us in this great land. We're grateful for the staff in this community. We pray for them and their families, that they will be kept safe during their absence. And we are grateful unto thee for all the rich blessings this great place has to give us. And we say these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Would you all please stand and read after me the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. We'll start with a roll call. Daryl, we'll start with you.
Daryl Magleby, present.
Jake Hoyt, present.
Randy Powell, present.
Mike Van Cherry, present.
Thank you, and we'll excuse our mayor. She should be here sometime in the next thirty, forty-five minutes. So afterward, when she arrives, she'll take over conducting the meeting. We have an exciting day today. A presentation oath in office for Deputy Director Brittany Ladler. We'll turn the time over to Adam and Kathy for that. Brittany, come on up.
So as you guys are aware, Brittany's been helping us out in as a deputy city recorder and doing a lot of various things. Kind of Kathy's training her to be a good backup when needed. And she put the newsletter together this month. It was, it was great, so.
She rocks.
We'll go ahead and have you come up, Brittany, and Kathy, I'll turn it over to you, so.
Yeah, exciting day for me. Well deserved, needed Brittany for a long time. She's the best candidate ever for this, this job that she's doing. She's handling both positions right now. I mean, she can multitask like nobody's business. So she's doing a great job, and I love her. Okay, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
Hi, Brittany Ladler.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Very exciting. Good succession planning for when Kathy retires in 2042? It's exciting. Congratulations, Brittany. We'll move on to the open session for public comment. I don't think we have any, so we'll. Oh, we do. Coming up, Marty.
Thank you. I just want to take a quick minute. Thanks to all of you who were able to make it to our Arts Night at Linden. I guess I'm supposed to introduce myself, huh? Marty Weber, and I am the art teacher at Linden Elementary. And anyway, we appreciate the support, and we also are excited to be able to move forward with all of the amendments we made to the park grant, because Linden Elementary's staying over, open for another year. So we're grateful for that. And we wanted to share something we are doing with the community, invite all of you to participate. There is, give you a little background, there's a street artist in LA. His name is Thank U X. And he does big murals on the sides of buildings in LA. He's since been hired by Snapchat, and he's become quite wealthy, I'm sure. But he did, does some school murals. They're called cube murals. And they look, they are made up of cubes like this that he makes. And he weaves different meanings and sayings into his artwork of that. And so at Linden Elementary, today we started our first day, we had three days, three classes today, who made their own cubes. So each of the students made their own cube, and we're gonna combine them all. And I wish I had a big picture to show you what it's gonna look like. But we're gonna try and line the whole walls of our school, and we're inviting the community and alumni to come and participate. There will be a desk at the front of the school for the next month, well, till school's out, that you can come and make your own cube. The top part is a uniting blue. Everyone will have the same uniting blue. And then you weave your name into disguise. If you look really close, you can see Weber in here. Some people have been really creative on how they disguise their names in here. And then this side is the things we love about Linden Elementary. So all the kids are doing this, and all, we've invited all the staff to do it. We've had some alumni participate as well. And we would invite anyone in the community to come join us in this kind of commemorating, commemorating a great year, after a lot of craziness and uncertainty. So, anyway, thank you.
Thanks so much, Marty. We, I know several of us attended the Arts Night, and it was wonderful. We appreciate the partnership between Linden Elementary, the city, the Park Tax. It's been a great relationship, and we appreciate you. Okay, we'll move on to council reports. Mike, we'll start on your side of the table.
Well, as all of you know, we attended the Utah League of Cities and Towns mid-year meeting last week in St. George. I, there were some good, relevant sessions, I felt like, some really good networking opportunities. I got to know Mayor Fugel a lot better, and had a chance to visit with him quite a bit. And we had a very good speaker, I thought. Talked to us about the dignity index. That was kind of interesting, wasn't it? It was great. Yeah, yeah, it was, so. Really nothing. I know, Mike, maybe you can share with us. Was able to make it this morning, but how, how did it go with our potential?
They didn't show up.
They didn't show up, so, so that well, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. All right, I guess we were looking at someone coming in wanting to do a, was it tennis, racquetball, or a pickleball? Tennis court, so apparently they didn't show up, so. That's really all I had, Jake.
Thank you, Mike. Randy?
Thanks so bad. So sad that I missed League of Cities in Town. Still waiting for my jar of sunshine from some one of you. I don't know if it's gonna step up on that one. But as far as emergency management goes, I got a nice email from Kelly and communicated a little bit with her. As you know, we are all waiting, watching, anticipating some probably small flooding at least. Hopefully, that will be the case. Anyway, she said, also, our peak flow will happen this week, more than likely. They're anticipating that happening this week. And she went on to say that Paul Miller reports that our current flow is manageable in Linden, in Linden's main and lower ditches, and Dry Creek and Battle Creek are both dry this morning. This was an email from this morning. And Grow Creek was low, was low flow. Of course, as usual, Paul's doing a great job. As far as youth council, we have had some really great interviews. Welcome letters has gone out. Brittany's been a great help, but she just has stepped out, as, as well as our advisors and Mayor Lumberg. We're going to have some great new members. And next council meeting, we'll have both the old and the new council members here to be presented and give thanks to. And I will step away for a few minutes in that meeting, but I'll come back quickly. I think Mayor Lumberg will stay here the whole time. Jamie reports from the city center that they've had a great April, that they have had, they even met with the mortuary to get some really good information on some of their services. I thought that was a little funny. And they've gone to a play, they've had card making classes, they usually do. We have our cardio drumming class. She said that they served over six hundred meals last month, which I thought was really impressive for a little community senior center. And then this, this next month, they are going out to the Hope and Glass Studio at Thanksgiving Point. They'll have, and the Oak Canyon Junior High Student Council will also continue. I will also make mention, outside of my council report, as I noticed that Tabitha Way's collection box is overflowing. Yes, so we probably need to give them a phone call, and then tomorrow, Holy Cow opens. That's all I have, Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor, may I just, one thing I forgot. I'm not used to go into these meetings, so I didn't think too much about it. But Van had asked me to attend the, I, I had agreed to attend, it was at the Water Users Board Meeting. And really, it's got a, Juan was there, yeah, Juan was there telephonically. And it was, it was a good meeting. I frankly don't know that much about water and all the terminology and all of the technicalities and stuff, but they seemed to do a good job of knowing what they were talking about. So there was nothing drastic to report. It was pretty standard stuff. They elected new officers for, there's a A-share and a B-share group. And then they had a general board meeting and just discussed the water potential this year and a few things like that. And it looks like they're gonna be, we're getting our water turned on here in the next couple of days, it looks like.
In the, another spot today.
The next couple of days. So we, our water division, they have started taking water out of the Jordan Aqueduct to fill the ponds. So the ponds will be full. I drove by about 2:30 today, the North Union Canal. They were putting water in the canal from the mouth of Provo River and running it today. It had not reached Center Street when I drove by in Linden yet, so it was still dry at 2:30. But as soon as that hits our ponds, then the connection is made, and they'll open up all the valves. And so it should be within the next couple of days that we'll have it citywide. We have a lot of anxious people.
Yes, there are.
Yes, there are. But we're to watch our secondary meters that were just put in, is that's what the recording seems to say?
Yes, so if you hear anybody that has, if, if it's leaking, most of them, well, all of them so far, they're, they're dry fitted. I mean, they were put together when there was not water in the system. So we expect there will be leaks. And it's, if they will call us during daytime hours at our Public Works Office or after hours, there's that non-emergency dispatch, and we'll come and fix those leaks. But we expect that will happen. We hope it's not overwhelming.
They did come into our neighborhood and put, put the meters in also, so.
Okay.
They do it very fairly quickly. I was quite surprised.
It's coming fast.
Quickly they do it, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Perfect. A couple of quick reports from myself. Would echo what Mike said about ULCT. I think they've got that thing, you know, finely tuned, it runs so well, and I'm always appreciative of being able to attend that. I always feel better prepared. Couple updates from the PD. I think all of you may be aware, we had a fatal accident that occurred, 700 North and State Street. Sad, sad event. I thought our police handled it very well. I appreciated the communication that went out quickly of the shutdowns to two of our major traffic arteries. But yeah, sad, sad incident for the city. We've had a vacancy in our PD for a while, and that's been filled, well, it's been extended as long as he passes his test. We should have a new officer on the force. And Chief's agreed to bring him here to the next council meeting to introduce him to us, so that'll be good. Parks and Rec, busiest time of the year. Heath, you're going a million miles an hour. Anything we can do to help?
No, I'd just say, thanks for your support. We're just plowing ahead, and soccer and baseball will be starting soon, so we're in the middle of Linden Days planning. So we're, we're plugging ahead. And the pool will be open by the end of the month, so.
How goes hiring for the pool?
We did well.
Good.
Yeah, we did well. I knock on wood. We did well.
Okay.
And a lot of pools are not, so we have a culture here.
Good. Right. Okay. Only other thing I had, I had a question from a, a neighborhood, from a neighbor, asking if we still do our deer program. I know we'd approved it. No one ever used it.
Yeah, so it went three years without anybody actually submitting an official application. And then the chief has been talking with the state about renewing that. And I, I'll, I'll be honest, I would have to circle around with him and see, did we actually get that renewed? I know that was in discussion with DWR. Just as an FYI, I think I sent the council members all a copy of, there was an email that was just a few weeks ago. If you may recall, last fall, Zach has been dally from our Public Works Department. We bought a little trailer, he's been picking up deer. We've had more than normal because of the snow pushing those animals down into the cities. We, as of, that was probably a month ago, he had picked up a hundred and three deer since last fall.
Shocking. That's a shocking number.
And so that, that deer removal program is very effective, is what I'm, I'm trying to convey. I think that is a larger number than several of the archery programs that we heard from the first few years that started a number of years ago in other cities, so. Just as an FYI, they, they can, they can talk to the chief. And as, as a reminder, our current, I think that, as I recall, the dilemma may have been that our current contractor, Humphreys Archery, they were out of the, out of the game now. And so that was the dilemma, is that we may have had a renewal of our process, but we don't have a contractor to actually harvest the deer.
And it's only available for a few short weeks in the fall.
Yes, and that was a new change. When they renewed it, it was only a few months, and they had narrowed that now down to one month. It was August was the only time that we could take those deer. And so if they're having problems right now, there's, there's not anything we can do about that. So I would encourage them, the best thing unfortunately for them to do for themselves is to put up a fence. And so there's some other things online that we've, we've seen where individuals, they'll put motion-activated sprinklers. And that is something that I've read has been effective in some areas, but a six footer taller fence is the best.
Okay, that's, that's great.
I can't remember, I read it, but what, what time period was that? I didn't.
That's since we bought the trailer and he started doing that, which I thought was the end of last summer or early fall. And so it hasn't even been a year. It was just through this winter.
That makes me question whether a depredation program would even be effective. You know what I mean? If there's over, there's a, if we killed a hundred, killed, if there were a hundred and nine accidents that killed deer, with them coming in and, you know, taking care of five or six, I don't know that it'd even be efficient.
And I, I don't know that those are all accidents. That could have just, just be deer that got hung up on a fence, or they just died of other natural causes. I drove by three in somebody's front yard today. And so they were just sitting in the front lawn. So they're.
We talked about originally how many we would have, our goal to eradicate, I think more than reached our goal.
Yeah.
One way or the other.
So if they're interested, have them talk to Chief Brower at the Police Department. And, but as, as I recall, talking with the chief, the dilemma is finding somebody to actually harvest those.
Sure. Okay. All right, that's all I've got. Carol?
Great. Report on Arbor Day celebration. It was a great event. We, I think I counted around 145, and there might have been a few that came after, so that's a pretty good number. I was impressed by the quick cleanup that we had from everyone. It was cleaned up very quickly. And, and we put things away for the, the Holy Cow boutique that had to come in the next day. And Heath, you're in your element with the microphone, by the way.
You should be a cruise ship director, is what I thought. Calling, dude.
And if the citizens only knew how many gift cards and stuff we give away, we'd have hundreds more probably show up just for that purpose only. But I was impressed by the coloring pictures that all the kids did, and it was just a great event. And appreciate the efforts of the city staff for that. Linden Days, we're, we're probably at the sponsorship amount now, aren't we, Heath?
Yeah, we're about $2,500, and I heard that Crumple will come in today.
Okay.
And Crumple is gonna try to come in, so we're, we're on our goal.
We have a few that have done it in the past, and we're still gonna work to get them on board. So we might be over our, our hope of $30,000 for that, Linden Days for that week, so that'll be very helpful. And then we're priming the pump for 2024, for Centennial to encourage additional funding to help with, with that as well. Just so that you know, council members, and we need to come up with an idea of what you want to ride in on the parade in August. So if any ideas that come around, just let me know. We can go back to our same source of last year if we want to do that, but we've got a few months to make that decision. Centennial celebration, we're with the Heath staff. We're trying to fill a calendar or some, one item per month to focus on, and, and then expand upon that based on help from the community, people that we, we asked to help with that. I sent an email out about the temple, won't be open until mid to late 2025 now. And we'll still, I'm assuming we'll still, I'll help them get their trees in in 2024, so we can count them, right, Mike? And that's all I have.
Thank you, council. Adam, administrative report.
So just an FYI, couple items. We talked about secondary water. Few of these are for the mayor and Van, who are here. So Community Department, or sorry, Police Department, their annual recognition dinner, they've done that several years in a row. Just a reminder, that is May 17th at 6 o'clock PM. The chief sent out an email, if you can RSVP to that, if you plan to attend.
Location for that?
It's gonna be at the community center.
Okay, thank you.
Just the election reminder, election candidate filing period is coming up, June 1st through June 7th. Also, on the Centennial painting, we had originally talked about a March 5th date in 2024. And with our contract that we finalized with them, they agreed to March 25th, which is technically, we think, a day after, it's the Monday after our official 100. So, so we'll have the unveiling on Monday, March 25th. In fact, Heath, could you, I don't know if I communicated with you. We reserved the whole building on March 5th. Did we move it to the 24th? Okay.
25th.
25th, thank you. Thank you. I sent out an email just asking for any other ideas on the puzzle. Hadn't heard anything back from anybody. So if, I think we've got another couple of weeks on that. So if you have any thoughts, if you've reviewed that, there were some good ideas that are already on there, but.
It's a good list.
Hold on, let's see here. I think that is it for me, Jake.
Thank you, Adam. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We do have one item there, a resolution to dispose of surplus equipment. Adam, you wanna walk us through that?
Yep, this is just a surplus resolution for this 2007 Arctic Cat. We've had some problems with electrical issues and the battery being drained, and we have a new one. Budget, and it's been delivered, okay. So this would be put on publicsurplus.com, and then we take bids on it.
Okay. I accidentally skipped the approval of the minutes, so we're gonna put a, oh, put a pin in that and go back to the approval of the minutes. I had reviewed them, and I hadn't seen anything, Randy?
I haven't seen anything. I'll make a motion, if everybody's okay.
Great.
To approve the minutes of April 17th, 2003 Arbor Gills City Council meeting.
Motion for Councilmember Powell, and a second from Councilmember Magleby. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it, it passes unanimously. Great job, Kathy. We'll now move back to that consent agenda item. I've reviewed that, I feel pretty comfortable with it. Is there any concerns up here from the council on that item?
No, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-9-R, surplus equipment disposal.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Perfect review and action, 2023-2024 Park Tax Mini Grant Awards. Heath, are you handling that item? Come on up.
As per our, our rules and regulations, we, I send information out a couple of weeks, well, months, and then a couple of weeks before the Park Tax Mini Grant deadline, and we only had one responder. And it's the Garden Valley Pipe Band, which practices in, in the auditor, or the Cultural Arts Auditorium on Thursdays. They are in it for a little bit of administrative money. And if you noticed on that, they're, most of their money is for trade of building time, which is the most valuable to them. I, I was in favor, and I am in favor of this, this grant because of their outreach. Anybody want to learn the drums or the bagpipe? Just show up. They are really open to, to supporting that here. And the other day, I was noticing, after I received their application, I was noticing on Thursday night, they had several new young people in the drum circle, learning the cadence and the. So it was really, they're really active, and they participate in lots of parades, in our parade. So that was the only application we received. And it was, it was to standard and good for us.
So the majority of that park tax for this particular purpose is rental space?
It is.
And that goes, that's for the community center, is that correct?
That is correct. So what I, what we do with this group is we pay them the entire amount, and he turns around and pays for the rental space. So it goes back into the, the revenue for the, the building.
Linden Elementary didn't apply. I know they've always applied, and that's just with the uncertainty.
Yeah, and you know, I can't get much out of the other schools' PTAs. You remember, a few years ago, we had Aspen that applied, and then at one time, we had the, the PTA for the Temp Academy apply. And they wanted a whole new building. It was quite a big grant request. So it's unfortunate, but one of the things I think that we did that was smart when we set this up is we make sure that they have or will have a significant presence in Linden. And instead of groups coming from Salt Lake and the, looking for the ballet and some of these other things, there, this for, it helps our residents participate. We've had a lot of participation in the past from, from the Storytelling Festival. They were doing stories here. But with that school's unknown circumstance, they did not apply.
Just for clarification, we can only, we cannot award any park tax money to school districts, so.
Correct.
So it's not the school, it is the PTA, so. And so any equipment that's purchased is owned by the PTA, that kind of stuff.
Correct.
Just for clarification.
Any 501(c)(3) can apply if they have a cultural or arts background, so we're actively looking. I thought we had a, on a side note, I thought we had a, a group that wanted to start a theater group, a little theater group. And children and babies got in the way. And so she was able, she wasn't able to get that organized, but I thought that would have been a great addition, a little children's theater that was run by a 501.
That'd have been great.
We're actively trying to get it done. So that would be our only request this year, their only request this year.
Okay, Heath, thanks so much. Council, any questions, concerns?
Very grateful for this. They do a, a fun job. I've found myself in the building on nights that they have been rehearsing, and it's so fun to listen to them, so.
I don't know if it's appropriate, but I would tell you a story. It was about 5:45 one evening, on a busy evening, and I put my head like this on my desk, and, and I, it was just solemn in there.
Brings you back to me.
It really, yeah, I'm, I was just in deep thought, and maybe I was even snoring a little, I don't know, just like this. Oh, yeah, there in there, they all started blowing the bagpipe, so. It's fun to listen to.
If you're bored on a Thursday night, head over to the community.
And they're good.
Yes, they are very good.
I mean, you never heard Danny Boy like you heard from that group, so.
That's awesome. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion. Move that we approve 2023-24 Park Tax Mini Grant Award to the Garden Valley Pipe Band as presented.
I'll second that.
Right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Council, if I could just bend your ear on one more thing. We're looking way ahead to Linden Days in 2024. Traditionally, Linden Days, well, tradition, not traditionally, Linden Days is always the first full week, except when it's not. But we are looking for that first full week of Linden Days for 2024, and that's, that's like the second Saturday, so I'll just. And that's, that's like the second Saturday, so I'll just give you a warning of that. It'll be kind of like this year, a little bit later than the first.
Little FYI.
Okay, we will now entertain a motion to enter into a closed executive session to discuss the potential purchase or sale of real property or to discuss reasonably imminent litigation. I'll take a motion and a second, then we'll have a roll call vote on that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, a motion from Randy, second from Darrell. All in favor? Let's start with Darrell. If you're an aye, say aye. Jake, aye.
Randy, aye.
Mike, aye.
All right, we are now officially in a closed session.
So before you say anything else, we need to shut down this recording, so.
We'll turn off the YouTube stream and turn off and restart the recording, right?